Are you ready, Adam? Awesome. Jackie, are you ready? I don't have to call the session to order, do we? Good. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for joining us at the work session here with elected officials and department heads. Maybe a little less formal than we have done it in the past, but I think this would just build on, you know, our first Monday meeting that we've had, and so we'll get back on to like a quarterly schedule, so you can plan on it in July and September and whatever the quarters are. But we'll just continue. So the monthly first Monday meeting will be at 3:30 and then every quarter we'll have this elected officials roundtable with these guys coming with us. So and then we'll report out to you guys what's happening with our boards and commissions and then also with our city liaison positions that we're working on so that you guys have a handle on what we're doing also. So I guess, does anybody feel like they want to do their report to us and we'll just go with a coalition of the willing? If not, we'll have to figure out some other way. David, you're up. Thank you, David. And for everybody who's paying attention, this is David Gerch, planning and zoning. Planning, excuse me.
Sure. Yeah, Chairman, Commissioners, just run through the projects we're kind of working on right now. Give you a little bit of statistics, not a whole lot, but so right now, we're obviously working on the Art for Protection overlay zone regulation amendments. They'll be on your agenda tomorrow. So then we'll go from there. Wherever they go from there, we'll continue that on. You'll also see on your agenda tomorrow is the Centennial Survey Standards Amendment that will go out for publication. We'll put those and then we'll meet back in 45 days and hear public comment and do something with those. The wind energy regulations are with the Environmental Advisory Committee. They created a subgroup to look at those. So we'll see how that that goes. We're also continuing to do subdivision regulation updates. So those are the regulation projects we're working on. We have a couple of planning projects. The Natural Resource Plan that should be kicking off pretty soon. Just I think waiting for some contract stuff to get signed and taken care of. And then we'll start moving forward with that. Also, the Casper Art for Protection Working Group, I've been a little bit involved with that, that group and with the potential of a cap update. We don't know how that's going to play out yet, but I'll be involved with that. As for kind of day-to-day operations, applications, we have nine active public applications right now. So public applications are those applications that require us to review, provide a Saturday report about planning zoning, the board of county commissioners for ultimate decision. So we have nine active right now. We have the rail tie project. Obviously, that's been a little time consuming. And we've got a number of, at least one conditionally use, a tower permit, some subdivision permits and some zoning change permits that we're working on. And that's actually a lot for right now. Past has been like, you know, two or three, we're kind of working through the process, but for whatever reason, people want to do things right now. Zoning certificates, applications, those are our permit to build. We've currently got eighty-seven applications as of April 30th, just to compare to see, see what that really means. Last year, this time, we had thirty-four applications. So we have a ton of zoning certificate applications. So if we keep up this, this trend, then we're going to, you know, break records and stuff for our office, but just a lot of applications. So
You're talking about primary and secondary?
Yeah.
Zone certificates?
Yeah, stuff for houses and outbuildings. Yep. So, so that's kind of a quick overview of the things that were, that are kind of going on in the process of hiring some folks and we can find some good applicants to do, to do some of the jobs we need to do. So is there questions you guys have for me or?
Mr. J, anything? David, I didn't know you've been busy. Thank you for the keeping the handle on it and then helping us with Alan's transition for the GIS. I really do appreciate that. Hopefully, we, you get some help so that addressing gets out from underneath the chair can, can help you along that lines too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to be next? Rob, thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, I put a kind of a outline down in front of you, just basically the core report. I'll start with, since I don't think I've done this since Sue's come on, so I'll give a kind of an outline of the county. Albany County runs from the Colorado border to within thirty-five miles of Douglas on the north border. County road infrastructure includes five hundred and thirty-four miles of gravel roads, two hundred and ninety-nine miles north of Rock River, two hundred and thirty-five miles in the Laramie area, about equal to the distance between Laramie and Windover, Nevada. Forty-seven miles of paved roads, one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven culverts, three hundred and twenty-two cattle guards, twenty-five bridges and approximately three point two miles of snow fence. Road and Bridge Department present consists of six equipment operators, a mechanic and office manager and superintendent, seven of which in Laramie and two in Rock River. Right now, we are down two employees currently. We prioritize our words according to school bus routes, mail routes, commerce and residents traveling to and from town in the winter. The plan is needed. We start around 5:00 AM with the pop trucks and the blades. In the spring and summer, we blade the gravel roads, clean cattle guards, culverts and monitor flooding. The fall months, basically, we're blading the gravel roads and mowing the lineways. Things that we've kind of got going on right now. We're looking to hire two employees, one to replace Trevor in Rock River and the other one, we've been talking over amongst in the crew and we actually think Dave, who is up in Rock River, we can, we can make it more efficient if we have one more guy down in Laramie and they have three in Rock River. Right now in Laramie, we, we get a lot of calls that require somebody to go out, clean the culvert or cattle guard and fix a sign. And right now that's basically build mechanic. So we need to we thought it would be better off bringing that one person that was up in Rock River down to Laramie and stationed out of here and because we can always take one person up to if we need to for help. Currently, we're blading county roads. It's nice to have the moisture. It just seems like right now every time about time to get started on a road that we have to find something else to do during the day. Working with Connect Gen on the rail tie, wind road reconstruction maintenance agreement. Last week, Jennifer Kern and Bill Gorman and myself, we met with Amanda and talked over their agreement that they'd sent us. Basically, it's not an agreement as such yet. It's more of a plan on what needs to be done on some of the roads and what they'll be doing such as replacing cattle guards. There's several spots that and as Bill Gorman calls them, the K value or whatever, horizontal curves and vertical curves that they're going to have to do some work on because right now the curves are too sharp to turn those long blades. And there's one spot at the railroad tracks I still they're going to get permission to do that. Some of our large projects that we have that we'll be getting to as soon as we can. At the blade and denture, we have a culvert replacement on the Pioneer Ditch and Welsh Lane. Are we going to have to sub out? Got any questions directed to you on Welsh Lane and why it's closed in that middle spot? There's a real bad swamp. But it's the last picture in your funding. In order to really fix that, the way it needs to be done, we're going to have to go in there and kind of pull all that material off of it, put in some large gravel base and then we're going to put a fabric over that and then replace the the road base with road gravel. That approximately three thousand feet by twenty-four foot long. Because it may take us a long time to get to it, I mean, in July and I hate to have the road close that long. I think after we get past this kind of wet frosty, you know, frost leaving the ground part of the season. But hopefully here in another couple of weeks, we can go up and lay that as it is and maybe fix it up well enough to get normal traffic across it, not large trucks, but you know, automobiles and, you know, somebody pulling a horse trailer. Some of the projects that we got done last fall, we replaced a half mile of the right-of-way fence on the Nebo road, which is per the agreement with Mr. Swanson. That was part of the Eastman Agreement. We did quite a bit of maintenance and upkeep and some, we did some fabrication on some of our equipment this winter. Fortunately, we, other than that storm we had in March, a lot of part of March, we didn't have a lot of winter finer. We haven't been doing it. Be honest with you, it's really nice. So we were able to get some projects done in the shop. Some projects that we're working on. Need to get with HR and set up the time. We're trying, we got some old semi trucks. Basically, they won't meet DOT and they're basically some nineteen seventy-three models and seventy-eight models. So we'd like to just either have silent auction or somewhat like we did, you know, a couple of years ago to clean out our yard and basically get rid of some of the equipment. We're also continue working on upgrading and updating our traffic counts on our county roads. And also we'll be working with this next month with T Square, I'm in T Square on a road safety and sign replacement. It's kind of a grant safety program they have through my doc. And that way we can go and update all our signs that are not rectal effective, have the proper vertical effectivity and things like that. On the, excuse me, on the Australia proposals and I'll be, tomorrow we have that, we did get a bid and we'd like to hopefully you guys will award it tomorrow, but we're replacing the last of the blades we have up in Rock River, nine forty-four. It went off, it goes off a warranty the end of May. And we'll use the two thousand ten specimens. On that sheet I gave you, basically what I listed there is the numbers we have now. Nine forty-four will be disappearing, but those are the numbers that we have now. And then the December twenty twenty-three is when it will be going off warranty. So the, not the date at the end of that is kind of when the next time we'll be wanting purchase another blade. And with this last blade, we were, we used to do a seven-year warranty and we actually, Ryman Machinery came to us with a nine-year warranty, which kind of helps push out some of that. You know, we get a few more hours on those blades. It's still in the warranty cycle. That's, that's a big plus. And we do a lot of cooperation with the county, other county departments, the clerk's office, helping with elections and things like that. Roy, we helped with trees blow down or, or like that one last spring when we, we had the snowfall that brought down all the tree branches. Then we work with the public health, the traffic cones, and they also use one of our trucks when needed to pull their trailer in. And then we're working with the treasurer clerk's office right now, trying to, and as Pete knows, we're trying to set up a program that we can track our expenses more for county road fund. So maybe we can recoup some of that money. Which the example of that resurfacing on Welsh Lane will probably be one of those projects that will fit into that. And like I said, I had some pictures. This first picture is up by Laramie on the, oh, the Port Hallic Road up by Laramie Peak. That was what we had. Then the second picture is up by Toddwood Park Road up by Laramie Peak. Also, that was after, you can see we got, that was the second to last day we were up there, which is a week after all this snow came. We had about forty-two inches, but we were able to get three blades up there. That really helped in open. We had it done and, you know, one day and I know everybody up in that area is pretty pleased to even had to file through Platte County to get to our roads. So Platte County was pleased too.
Mr. J, anything for Rob?
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. The snow fence contract. Are, is Centennial Woods still building free snow fences for them?
I think they're really busy right now because we're actually, I called them a couple of times on the big hollow snow fence. And it's really needing some attention and, you know, that was part of the things that they were going to do. So I don't know if they have time to build new snow vents. I mean, we definitely have places we can truly use some new fence, stone fence and when they're able to do that.
They probably have labor issues. It's like everybody knows.
And back to our, you know, trying to find, we've been advertising for, you know, six months. We really have an issue finding somebody with a CDL or a Class A CDL and you need that to drive the dump trucks or, or, you know, pull the belly dumps around. And that's, it just seems like right now it's probably there's just so many other places for them to use that, you know. Nobody's looking to work for, for us right now. So
Does that have anything to do with the, the old trucks? I mean, in my business, I'm going to have to buy automatics because people don't know how to float gears.
Yeah. I, you know, exactly. Talk back because we, we have one automatic and it's, I'm mad, you know, I'd rather die than the it's just, you know, it's just a lot easier, but you know, that may be a reason. There's a lot of, there's a gap, you know, for the CDOs as far as, I don't think it's our issue because we're just not getting to be, but he flies with the CDO. It's, you know, Trevor, you know, he worked for us for about four months and then he decided he could get paid more elsewhere. Some of that is young, young kids look at dollars per hour instead of the benefits per hour. And frankly, if we had the benefits in, I don't it's hard to compete with this. Young, young kids are wanting to spend the money. They don't realize that when you get older, it's kind of nice to have that retirement destiny.
To anything?
I have one more question. What do you put in solidify smushy piece of Welsh land? Do you, do you go get recycled concrete from one of these outfits or?
And I'll be talking to both, well, the ones that are on that end about some kind of asphalt or recycled material. It's, you know, five, six inch plus, you know, material to put on the bottom. And then we'll put that fabric over the top a bit and then like, you know, then resurface it with gravel that we had on. When you gravel pit. It, if you, it's kind of, you can't really tell in most pictures, but if you're out there driving through it, it's kind of in an alkali patch, which it's kind of hard, you know, that doesn't stay stable very, very, so. And part of the, the issues we'd have right now, hauling material out there is we'd probably tear up our road, get to that spot and we would, we would fix.
I used some of that structural fill recycled concrete last week. It was the first time I'd ever done it and I thought it was amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to, we had some of the, basically the asphalt was pulled up from Lincoln Project. You know, Lincoln Museum over there, Lincoln School in the yard. We used that in a spot, I don't know if you run the the Welshian between Curtis and one thirty, we kind of had a blowout there. We put a bunch of that in there. First, we didn't get the tarp put on the top of it, but it made a big difference. So like that a lot better than, you know, for a quick bit.
Well, thank you so much for your work with the county road fund and, and replying to that letter and then getting us on the path to not getting any more nasty grants. I'll be really excited not to ever have to see that letter again. It'll be in compliance and
Well, that, that takes a lot of help from the, of the resident county too with the budget. So
Correct. Yeah.
Hopefully we can make a work for everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Good afternoon. Commissioners?
I'll talk a little bit about what we got going. Currently, I've got about a hundred firefighters and thirty-five piece apparatus. That kind of fluctuates depending on the day, but that's about where we're at most of the time. Last year was a busy year, probably the busiest year we've ever seen. Of course, we had the Mullen Fire, largest fire in Wyoming. But that was only part of our show. We had Albany County firefighters on forty-five different significant events in the country. Revenues from that, well, we collected just over two point three million dollars for the use of our folks and our equipment on all of those fires. So it was a big year. That's a number that myself and Scott, my predecessor, kind of tracked through the years. And I think that's, that's probably as much as we've ever done. So big year that way. We had four significant fire events in the county. Mullen, of course, was a monster that everyone remembers, but there are three smaller incidents up north that went, went significantly better than those. We had minimal loss of property and, and stuff up there. But that kept our guys fairly busy as well. I myself, I was, I was on incident about ninety days last year. I had one firefighter, I talked to her today. She wasn't sure, but she thinks she was on incident a hundred and seventy days last year. So we, a lot of people out a lot of time. In the news, we had some damage to the Laramie Peak Fire Hall at Hubbard's Cover. Just recently got some estimates on it. It wasn't too bad. I think the estimates are the eighty-five hundred to nine thousand dollar range. The snow was still loaded up. There was fierce and, and tore off the gutters and did some damage to the roof and some of the siding. So we'll go back and that cleaned up this spring. Playing a lot of catch-up this year because last year we weren't, weren't able to do the, the types of in-person training that, that we always do. And so this year we're kind of doing double duty with, with a lot of our trainings and it's, it's really busy. Training's just about every day of the week and weekends right now at different departments trying to get back where we need to be in terms of operational effectiveness. So that's us. Any question? Oh, I guess the one thing we need to touch on is the FEMA Mullen Recovery Funds. To summarize what's going on there very quickly, and then Blake may have a little bit, some more details on it, but the funding to begin and do some of the projects we'd like to do is moving at the speed of FEMA right now. FEMA's been busy doing, they had a busy year too. So I, I like to roll on them, but we're not exactly at the top of their list of things to do and it's, it's going frustratingly slow. We need those funds months ago to begin project work to try to stabilize soils and remove some damaged trees and, and start making things safe and environmentally sound up there. I'm thinking that those funds are, are not immediately forthcoming. So we, we continue, Travis from State Forestry is kind of our point guy on that because he's the, he's the state forester and he knows the answers to the questions that federal government's asking and he continues to supply those, those answers very quickly. However, it I guess essentially it doesn't matter how quickly we move. It is, it's have a little bearing on the final timeframe of all. So I wish I had better news about that. Landowners are, are getting itchy and I, I think that it's it's going to be a patience game. People might not have the patience. We'll see how that goes.
So have landowners started doing their own work? Does nobody know that?
Yes. Yes, I'm sure people are. The, the biggest problem right now, well, my, my single biggest frustration is that this commission committed funds to matching that grant. However, those funds are now tied to that grant because they are a match and we can't even spend our own money until the approvals come through, which drives me wonky, but tis the way it works. So I think people, you know, people had insurance policies and in other ways, you know, they're relatively self-sufficient. A lot of properties were severely damaged in terms of you know, dozer lines and stuff like that. And if it was, it was something that they have a tractor and they're cleaning their own place up. Some stuff was way worse and there's a lot more trees to deal with and a lot more replanting and soil stabilization was to be done. So hopefully at some point, we're going to be able to provide the assistance that I think a lot of people are expecting.
Heber, anything?
Chad and I actually ran through it a few days ago, so I'm up to speed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go feed.
Thank you.
Good day, Chad. Blake, how are you?
Good. How are you guys? Good afternoon. Kind of updates from our department. Planning wise, we're updating our evacuation plan. Oh, the sheriff and the fire ward. We wrote, rolled through that last couple of weeks ago. It's kind of before it was kind of updated. So due to changes after the Mullen Fire, now how citizens are trained how to evacuate, we kind of had to redo that. Working on a livestock and animal evacuation plan. Also kind of came out of the Mullen Fire, saw a need. So we're kind of partnering with some local, state, federal and non-governmental agencies on that. And we're also working on forming a livestock evacuation team. If anyone is interested in that, please feel free to contact me. We're kind of heading that project up there. Also created a Mercy Operations Center manual for kind of internal use of ours. Working on a volunteer and donation management plan. And then we attended Fair Safe, which looks at biosecurity and bear safety. A few weeks ago, the sheriff and the extension and fairgrounds identified a few gaps over there with security needs and stuff. And we're actually hopefully be looking at a grant so that can cover some security fire alarm system needs over there for next year. Kind of response and recovery side. Like Chad had said, the Mullen Fire is kind of a waiting game with FEMA right now. We have good partners there with the state and all that, but it's just FEMA's just being slow. We have partnered with the National Weather Service in Carvin County and some of the local first responders. So whenever there is a flood threat on the burn scar, we'll get notified. So if we do have significant debris flow or flooding that comes off, we'll hopefully know about it first and, and be able to respond a little bit quicker than we normally would. Other on the response side, the only biggest thing we've had lately is the big winter storm. We did submit all of Road and Bridges expenditures. The state is trying to get that federally a federal disaster grant through it because Cheyenne, they had quite a bit of our expenditures, one was with Platte County. So if we get up to a million dollars within the state, they'll actually reimburse us for some of those funds that we gave out. So there'll be more updates on that. They're still trying to gather data on that. Equipment wise, we're still waiting on our latest radio order from our last Homeland Security Grant. Right now, everything is on back order. So I'm hoping to get those in a few Right now, everything is on back order, so I'm hoping to get those in a few weeks because the U C needs a radio bat. Training and exercises, we hosted a two-day livestock evacuation training for all county first responders with the UW extension. So they went over evacuation, diseases and transportation accidents. So it was pretty useful and we actually saw that there is a, a grant we can apply for, for some of the livestock needs in the next year. Did a half-day training with Chad to prepare all of our volunteers for fire season. Also hosted a tabletop last week with all the first responders to kind of update for the upcoming flood season. We've up to, attended a railcar incident training. We're also developing some new press releases, evacuation notices. We've, like I said, we were redoing some of the evacuation stuff. We do have three new volunteers and then one unpaid intern, which is nice. And then we have started a Facebook page for public information and things like that. Kind of our big updates for the month and couple of months.
Questions?
A little bit. It's kind of shared, yeah, it's between me and, and our, we're having P I O, a public information officer in training. Looking forward to having that as well in the U C.
Blake, is that P I O, is that fully funded by grant or do we?
It's volunteer.
It's volunteer.
Yeah, it's a volunteer P I O, so.
Still the main P I O on stuff, but it'll be nice to have to do press releases. He's former writer for the, for a newspaper.
He's got some experience, but yeah, he's a volunteer. All my other positions in the U C.
Questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Anybody? Awesome. Thank you.
I am Josie and I'm the executive director at the Fairgrounds. It's nice to meet you. Um, the project we have is we worked with Blake and the sheriff on the fair safe project and Blake covered that. And so I'm just providing them with as much info as I can. We did get some new footing at the range thanks to our foundation and so the Ranger Arena is a lot more marketable to certain event or horse events. As we do have a new footing of four inches of washed concrete sand and it's absolutely beautiful. I'm a horse girl and it's amazing. We're working on some new barn doors and we recently hired a new grounds maintenance manager. And he is doing a great job at getting stuff caught up. And some of the deterred maintenance caught up and fixed and really prioritizing where, where our budget needs to lie and the new projects that we can, we can make happen. On our stored items that we have, they've all been pulled out in the last week. And all but ten or twelve have been picked up. And so that's really exciting that we were able to do that within a week this year. It took us six weeks last year, so that's efficiency. And then so all the barns are getting cleaned out this week and last week. Every weekend this summer is booked for events with at least two events in the activities buildings, other barns, the grandstands arena or the range arena. I am looking to hire two in office for the fair season and for the fair specifically, we do have some exciting events. And we'll have a pedal tractor pull for the kids and a tractor driving competition, a cornhole tourney, and then as always, I'd like to invite you guys to the junior livestock sale.
Thank you, Josie. Sue.
You too.
Ever anything?
I just want to see the pedal tractor pull.
Good fun.
Yeah.
We're adorable.
Do you know that when I was a little kid, like my dad was an accountant and he did the taxes for a little John Deere dealership. South East Side of, and for payment, they gave him this little pedal John Deere tractor. This was in like nineteen seventy-five or something, nineteen seventy-six. And I still have it. My kids play on it.
So pedal tractor pulls were something that had been done a while ago while Nikki nearly was here and it was a really well-received thing while she was here. They did go away with some other events and so we're just kind of bringing back the history of, history of those events while adding the tractor driving competitions. Very excited about that.
Awesome. And the new stuff maybe from the rec board to help make the arena.
Yes, I'm really hoping for that, yes. I would be very helpful to help us get our, where it needs to be in our outdoor arena, the water tank.
Yeah, awesome.
Guess I do have one more question and that is the Ranger Arena was a very nice thing for the fair about to do. It seems like maybe at the outset, it was hard to figure out because of maintenance issues and things, how to use it, what, what are appropriate functions? Or has that, have you guys sort of dealt with that?
So a little bit. So part of the, so part of the challenge with the Ranger Arena is it's long or it's short and narrow. So you really can't host like row races, ratings, cow horse, anything like that. It's really just a riding arena, which is great for that market of people that just want to come ride their poles or ride their horses or anything like that. But as far as hosting events over there, it's not big enough or long enough or wide enough. And so we have taken on the, or not taken on, it's been a boarding facility. And so we, sure renters are happy and keep those people coming. They, the foundation also did put in brand new Richie Waters back in February, I think, and all the labor and water, or the labor was all donated by the foundation and their guys came and did that. And then they did purchase the waters for us. So they've been doing a lot of improvements over there to give us the best facility. We do have some, a leach field problem over there. It's either going to need to be replaced or relocated or like rebuilt. And so that's something that we've been looking into getting quotes on that. But as far as finding usability for it, we have been marketing a little bit more to just general riders now that we have.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Rachel.
Put the boards together. Hi, how's it going? Um, yeah, so for the library, exciting things happening. As of Saturday, we're now open six days a week, so we're really happy to be back to normal-ish hours. So we decided six days a week actually gives us the way that we've arranged it, three more hours than what we were open pre-pandemic. So we're open every day except for Wednesday. So we're closing to the public Wednesday. So we have a staff day to settle in, not have to worry about scheduling the desk. We get tired. I actually almost barely made it here because we were down to two people on our desk. But so yeah, we're really excited. It's obviously been a little bit slow. But we're hoping to get the word out. So tell as many people as you know, we're open six days a week and then Saturday and Sunday, ten to six. So every day that we're open, we're open ten to six. We went with consistent hours, no more of that one to five one day, ten to seven the other. Um, so we're really excited about. So it's kind of the big thing. We actually just did a staff reorganization, put in a bunch of new positions and moved people around just in part to incorporate and be able to better incorporate the bookmobile into our overall structure. And how are we going to do that? So we now have an outreach unit that will be focused specifically on things happening outside the building. So it'll be the bookmobile. But it's also our book delivery to homebound patrons, to patrons living in senior centers, that sort of thing. And then along with that too, we created a new position for a meeting room. So we're hoping that with our spent funds in the fall, we can actually redo that meeting room. And then have someone, by having someone in charge of it, that they'll be able to, we'll be able to add some services on like offering room setup, like doing more full A V, like providing food if they want to have an event there where we go pick up. But then also charge and charge people for all of those things. So we can generate some more revenue off of that room. So that's really our hope is that we can use that as a bigger revenue generation thing. I can't remember if we talked, if you didn't know, we did actually go on the flip side of that is we went completely fine free in February. So because of the pandemic, we actually just wiped out all past fines. We gave everybody a clean slate and started from zero. And then now the only time people are charged is if they damage an item or if they lose an item. But other than that, we're not charging them because we'd rather make money off of services than, you know, getting a book in a week late. So those are kind of some of the big changes. Summer reading is always our big thing in the summer. So our Bay activities this year, we're going to, we're partnering with the Civic Center. And we're still in the process of getting all of the right permits through the city. But we're essentially going to do a block party between the library and the Civic Center. So the plans to close down that street between us. And then we'll do Thursday night events out there in July and August. So it'll just be local bands. We'll bring out our giant games. So it should just be a fun family event. So we're doing those Thursday nights and then Friday, Fridays like we did last year. We've taken over, we've actually, we're now actually on the committee for the farmers market planning committee for the Friday market. And we've taken over their toy, toy corner or toy whatever. And so we tell, we'll take over the corner of the park and have all of our games and stuff out there. So that's kind of what we have coming up. And then obviously we're working on getting the bookmobile rewrapped. We have, we're working on the design right now. We're going to do a launch event on July eighth. So everybody will be invited. We are going to recreate in some form. So July, well, July fourth is actually the fortieth anniversary of the book chain that moved all the books from the old Carnegie Library to the new building. So we're going to do July eighth, but recreate the book train to start filling our bookmobile. So we'll let you guys know when that's coming up because that'll be fun. And then other things, just the other big things on the horizon. So a lot of our spent money was planned on doing interior improvements. So we're hoping that this fall and into next spring, we're going to tackle a lot of those projects to try to get the inside of a library a nice little place left and just a nicer, nicer place to be. Questions for me?
If there's any questions. Go ahead, Adam. Josie?
Since we have been booking so much our activities building and people ask if, hey, is there another place you recommend? What's your capacity?
Um, I believe it's eighty with chairs and a hundred and twenty without.
That's about what I mean.
Yeah, that would be perfect. We should make sure that we have like mutual information sent back and forth. Yeah. So. It's a, yeah, so it's, it's right now it's at thirty hours. So not quite full-time, but we do benefit at thirty hours. So in this reorganization, we kind of split our difference and we have a lot of thirty-hour positions, hoping that as we get more funds in the coming years, then we'll be able to slowly increase those, those positions up to forty hours.
Sue, do you remember the, the book chain? And the books? I remember that.
All right, Joe. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Adam.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Adam, Director of I T. Just thank you guys for being here today. We've been working hard in our department, continue, try to help push the county forward. I don't remember what we reported on last, so I'm just going to kind of try to go back through the historical a little bit here. I would say into last year a little bit, we rolled over to the new Tyler Case Management System for the Attorney's Office as well as the new J Link system. If you weren't aware of that, that's a part of that package that came out from the city. We integrated the portions that came our direction and both offices are up fully in operational on those systems. You guys approved the purchase of a new storage array as well as compute hosts. If you remember correctly, it was cheaper to actually buy new compute hosts than it was to even bring our current ones back under maintenance or support. Both of those tasks have been completed. We are entirely on the new storage array as well as the new compute hosts. The old equipment is, we're currently looking at a D R recovery solution and locations as well as the interlinks that are necessary to make that happen so that we can have an active failover in some form or another. Let's see here. We spun off the new email gateway. So that's that Barracuda appliance package that you guys approved a little while back. Not only is that the protection, but it was also a lot of useful archiving features, the cloud-to-cloud backups. So it gave us a lot of redundancy when Microsoft had that large outage across the U S where mail flow essentially stopped for U S customers. We were easily able to essentially spool up. We have a ninety-six hour email spool on their head end side. So it doesn't, there's no work. There's nothing on us. It's all on their infrastructure. They spool and spooling, meaning essentially queuing that, those messages coming in, they create a large queue being ready to be delivered because they're essentially undeliverable at that point, right? So that was a huge redundancy that allowed us to essentially not lose anything through that. I, I do believe Microsoft was also spooling on their side, but it was nice knowing that we had that and that control and that visibility. Because it's not something you had there at that level. Let's see here. Oh, let's see. We've continued working on network segmentation and routing across the county, building out different networks for the sheriff's office, the attorney's, the commissioners' room, anything that didn't, elections, we're working on the fourth floor right now. And this is, this is essentially in preparation for hopefully some new hardware that will allow us to then continually essentially segment everyone's network so that what is needed communication wise is there, but if something were to happen and, you know, some form of outbreak, it limits and contains within that singleized network versus essentially a full, you know, washboard event, right? Here, we had the, we had A N M come through and do a Wi-Fi analysis for us. We've been meeting with different industry reps, H P, Ruba, Maraki, doing demos on their platforms. We're looking at the platforms as a whole because it's something that we want to integrate, not only just the wireless side and the management on the wireless side, but also probably the switching hardware itself down the roads. We're trying to, we, we've been concentrating primarily on the platforms. Because the hardware will be the hardware, one way or another, each, each and every company will offer a piece of hardware that will fulfill our density and access needs. We already have the layout and essentially the, the heat maps needed to know where to place them accurately and in a cost-effective manner. And so we should be approaching you guys here fairly soon. It'll start with the wireless side. But understand that that's kind of a commitment that we're going to make, that the switching will come in on the backend as well. I don't see us mixing and matching there. You kind of want to, most of them are built around ecosystems and you want to stick within that ecosystem. So we're working pretty diligently on that there. You've seen the phone system improvements, the, the upgrades. We are on the latest release of Mitel now instead of the very old decrepicated short tail system. I've seen some problems in terms of some quality and so I'm investigating. It's either the switching timeline across us and routing across different floors. I'm also seeing some delays just happening at the carrier ends. We may investigate even looking at a new partner there. Providing a cleaner signal setter, moving even to a SIP implementation. Let's see here. Most, all the offices, we've retired their old access databases. If you guys are familiar with any of the handle systems. Those have been, I believe, to my knowledge, all replaced with our Smart Sheets integrations, which is online dynamic form generation and calibration on the backend road and bridge heavily. Clerk's office uses it heavily. Couple other departments. And so we've been opening that up and working on those circumstances. See here, you know, we're working on the new access control system, working with long on the implementations there. The head end is built up and the backend software is all there. Sitting in the data center, we did not use the server that they expected provided. And when it arrived, I found the redundancy was not there. So we spun it up on our virtual infrastructure. Unfortunately, they do not take a return on that. So that is something we ate, but I think it's more worth the time and the, the cost that was associated. We had the availability and we will re-implement it in the best manner possible. Either in a backup set for the access control system or wipe and go back and find something that's a little less than too intensive or necessary in those means to, to give us that. Well, we're going to find a home for. Let's see here. We've been working on our PCI D S S submissions. We just finished this last firewall upgrade and the VPN upgrades. We are now passing our PCI scans, so external scan sets for PCI validation, which is awesome. It's a big step. And we're about, I'm about ninety percent way through the PCI D S S form, PCI being credit card process. PCI being credit card processing and the certifications essentially that you are taking these steps to certify and segment and document all the things that have come along in those standards. So, um, there's gonna be some work in terms of getting that up to standard, but the initial submission's coming along. And see, yeah, and we're just continuing our partnership, partnerships with the CISI and, and Homeland and all the federal government offerings, taking a book in terms of training. Um, offered there, we both, we also offer our own training there through uh, No Before and Stormets. So in-house training as well as training across the county. What else, guys?
Any questions? It almost sounded like English. No, uh, thank you, Adam. Um, and you forgot to mention that, you know, I passed you with a few forms and, and other stuff, putting Zoom links and, oh yeah, thank you for doing that. That's been uh, well received uh, from the people that I talk to. Um, so, so thank you for that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is looking at the horizon is our, I know there's gonna be federal money coming for broadband. Um, and I would really like us to take the opportunity and really capitalize on our site interlinks as well as our head-in interlink. Both our internet connection in and out, so our upload-download set, transitioning that head-end here. Um, providing a, a, and you could even, or a better backup, if not a equal backup in terms of what we provide there, and then the interconnects to all of our remote sites. Um, right now, if you guys aren't aware, we're on point port wireless, um, all of which is fairly old and needs to be replaced, and that's something we've already voted and looked at, but we can also look at it from the, like the, you know, fiber run or renting circuits from service providers and essentially leverage that onto them. Um, so that we can concentrate on the IT work and not just the service set. So something to think of in the, in the long run here is we see those funds come available.
So I think what you just said is, um, that right now, we, we do the point-to-point, you know, to, for our network outside of this space right here.
Yes.
Down at the surge and rescue building and places like that, we do that with our own point-to-point wireless equipment, and you're saying that we can rent or lease or purchase space on a providers and sort of make that part of our network so we don't have to do that ourselves?
Yeah, exactly. No, I think you summarized that well, keeper. Um, we have the distinct advantage as having this huge tower just outside of our building here. It is sidelined to the majority of our sites, so, you know, I, I definitely say it was smart on previous IT to take advantage of that and it to bring up the sites on essentially a point-to-point microwave, dish on one side, dish on the other. Um, and that's how your connection works, is it's all through the air, but that's also very environmentally based. The new technology is great. It, it, a good strategy would be to update it, especially if you're not looking for long-term costs of rental space, because we don't have the construction costs or ability to run independent fiber lines to each building. But if we're seeing federal funds come available and we have the option to go to do that and to rent those space for a good, long period, I would strong, strongly recommend that we do so. One, it takes the service end off of us and the updates, so on and support that perks it on and ISP, which is appropriate and through their hardware, and then two, it takes the environmental aspect out of it. We don't lose and have segar, you know, service degradation because there's a whiteout. Yeah, there's a whiteout, you know, there's eighty mile an hour winds in my, you know, no matter what kind of tower you have, it's gonna have a little flex, right? At that point, you, you have a dedicated coming up through the ground connection. Um, and so just something to keep on the forefront as we see those come available, and something we've been investigating uh, I, pretty heavily.
But that's all they could do at the time, you know, it was probably because the technology changes so quickly.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and, and.
That was the thing to do.
I agree, so. Questions? If you, if you guys have questions or if something wasn't there, you're welcome to see me after, and I would happily step anyone through all of that.
As far as this, the specific purpose tags, you know, upgrades, kind of the expensive hardware and, and all of that kind of stuff. How far are we through that journey of updating all of that? Do you still feel like you're Dick Van Dyke running Chitty Chitty Bang Bang? Um, or are you, or does it work?
A, a large chunk will be coming here fairly shortly in terms of the wifi and the, in the switching. So your, your access points and your switching, which I think will eat up the majority of what is left in the bonded side, so that first three-year bonded side. Um, and it, yeah, I can't say I, I feel like Dick Van Dyke.
Um, when you first got it.
Yeah, um, I, every, every. I, I really don't, I'm assuming here. I, I, I have no idea, I have no idea who that is, to be completely honest. I'm, I'm gonna say that.
You'll look up Chitty Chitty Bang Bang and you'll figure out what it is.
I get, I get a lot of judgment going on behind me right here that, you know.
We're dating ourselves.
I think the switching infrastructure, the wifi, and then the, the inner links will be a huge, will be huge here, absolutely. Um, and I think the funds, I think the, the federal funds will be there to cover the, the first end, and then we'll work through the spent tax side. So.
From your perspective on the door locks and the security.
Yes.
Stuff, how far, how, how, how are we doing on that?
Um. Okay.
Okay.
Um, I think we hit quite a few roadblocks in terms of what was spec versus what should have been spec.
Right.
And that comes in change orders. I would ask you guys to be very agile there. Um, and understand that we're gonna push to have it done correctly the first time, and, and you make that investment upfront in terms of the, what the words needed or the hardware associated, um, make sure things are code-set and so on. Um, I like the base end system. I like open options as a platform. Um, all cards have been distributed except for some janitorial cards, um, the access controls going there. We're working on limiting the spectrum so that you readers only read the new cards. Um, and just trying to communicate appropriately with all the departments in terms of what your new card does, what your old card does. Um, there's still some tail over. I had a, a lapse in terms of looking at the project as a whole, and I missed the, the fuel card system. Um, that still uses the old card. Um, so not, not a lot could be touched there. Um, maybe an upgrade to the O P W pump, but that's at this current time, it's just looking at dual wielding for those who have to fuel. So we could look at dual personality cards, possibly too. There, there's options, ways to skin that guy. But.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate it. Roy, how about you?
Oh, it's one of the four people that have Chitty Chitty Bang Bang.
Is that not a fair description of the IT system as he walked into it? I think that's funny.
I gotta say, Sue, I'm, I'm usually very prepared for this, and I look forward to it. I thought this was our, like, our department meeting where there's only one commissioner and we're getting, getting, so I had to put something together here, so I'm gonna try and throw myself a couple of notes. So I'll go through some of that, but I'm usually better prepared. Uh, first thing, um, Archon and Construction, as far as the close-up goes. Uh, Bill's working on some more stuff. They've done pretty much everything that I've asked for uh, inside the building. Uh, there's one thing I'd like him to uh, fix before they go, and that's a, an electrical box outside that they ran over. It's kind of busted in. I've asked him several times to fix that, but Bill's working on some more stuff. They've been, uh, the electrical is all done now. Um, Dr. Electrician's recently, and they, they pretty much got it on that list, and uh, so like touch-up paint here and there, different things have all been done inside the building, so. Um, there might be some HVAC stuff, uh, the fence that's gonna go in. Um, I'm gonna have some big things with uh, sprinkler system once I, uh, once you turn it on this spring and I, there's a guy that he had working with him that I liked a lot, uh, with Archon, and I'll probably, probably call him back. I can't remember, I think his name was Cody, young man, Cody Wayne, you know? Uh, and so my, uh, just worked with him, and uh, I believe Archon's gonna, you know, fit that bill, but I know we're gonna need some new sprinklers and some lines and stuff like that. Um, the doors, uh, Adam puts on a, on all that door, uh, access stuff, the, um, there's a couple of things I saw that I brought to the attention that you can probably expect change orders on. And one of them was, uh, they did the, on the new entry, they did one door, but they didn't do the other door. And so I left the sheriff's office or somebody still pinning and unpinning that, that crash bar. Uh, why it didn't, two doors, there's two doors there, why they pointed one, I don't know. But that's probably gonna be a change order you can expect. Uh, it does look good to only have one door and have them a pinning and unpinning that door every day. All it takes is one person to forget, and you got people wandering in the halls in the middle of the night. And I've been able to come into the building. It's ridiculous. So, uh, the other one I noticed was I, I, I went to open a door that had been changed, and I, uh, because I didn't wanna, well, I didn't reach in and grab my new key, I figured I'd just use my master key. Well, master key no longer works on any of those new doors. Uh, they're all new, uh, hardware. And I asked the guy, I said, is there gonna be a master? He said, no. He said, I'm gonna give you individual keys. So I'm gonna carry fifty, fifty keys in my pocket. He said, what do you want me to do? Because you got a card. I said, well, unless you don't have any power, or the tend, it's, or it gets fried like it did before, nobody can get into their uh, office without uh, a key. And so, um, so I don't know how that's gonna work out. I called Bill immediately and said, we gotta have, the sheriff's office has to have a, uh, a master key to this, and so does the maintenance guy. Uh, IT, um, I'm not sure who else has those, but those are very important. In case something happened, we can at least let somebody into their office. So we can expect that change order as well. Um, there's a cord, I think, uh, since you were probably telling you, I don't know where she's at, but that construction on that new door, uh, is gonna be in their hallway, and it's just an emergency exit door, it's supposed to start this week, and uh, uh, Kent Marshall said it would take one day. I'm hoping he's gonna be good with that and, and get that done in one day. Otherwise, I'll have to make some other, uh, I don't know how to seal it up, but uh, anyway, I'm hoping he does it all in one day. Um, chiller, I still don't know. I, I sent Bill some messages today to see if he had any idea when that project would start or end. Uh, I'm just afraid we're gonna get into June, and there's gonna be some hot people in this building, and uh, I know when they were bidding on it, uh, the people that were bidding on it said, because there was a time uh, that they wanted it done by, and all of them said, we're waiting sixteen, at least sixteen weeks for parts. That was before we chose a, uh, a company to do it. And so that was gonna put us into June just then, so, and then we took some time and got the, the contractor picked out. But I'm hoping, I don't know what else, what we can do. They, they lowered, uh, um, I don't know, so the, the, the fluid cooler they have out there right now will make cold air when it's, when it's cold, or when it's, once it gets so hot, it won't, won't do it. You need the chiller. And what they're planning on doing is they set the settings a little different to where it'll cool the building down as much as it can at night. So when they walk in.
The temperature difference is greater.
So, yeah, and then, then it'll cool it down at night, but once you get warming up during the day, it's not gonna do anything. But it'll at least start out cool and get hot, and I don't know what else we can do other than maybe some, uh, even your individual room coolers need a, a vent, uh, because it's a byproduct of those things that you gotta vent them out to get rid of that heat. Can't do it, we, we got ceiling windows that don't open, so, uh, we're, uh, we're kind of stuck with that. I don't know what we're trying to work on, but I don't know what we're gonna do other than just fans. And then you're just pushing on how they're depending on how hot it is that we have. Um, let's see, uh, oh, this is a thing that I, I have toilet problems. Nobody likes to hear about those, but I, I have them all the time. Uh, it was one in the jewelry room up on fourth floor. Uh, we changed everything. The, I couldn't get it to work. Now, these automated flush toilets are a pain in the, you know, what? They, there's about four parts in them, and you can't tell which part it is, so you gotta replace one. If that doesn't work, you gotta replace another and keep on going. I replaced everything in it. I thought, maybe it's me. I'll call a plumber. So I gotta call the plumber. He replaces everything he can do, and it won't do it. He finally said, would you just like to have a regular hand flush? You can do that? I said, go ahead. So he took it apart, but uh, so it's a, it's a hand flush toilet up there. Uh, I came in this morning, Seth Crickens office in their admin office, um, the toilet was running. I don't know how long it's running. Might have been running all weekend. I don't know. Um, but just pours water, 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 and that's what the one up on the fourth floor was doing. I called the plumbing company, uh, that put the other one in. I'm just gonna put, they said, I don't mind flushing with my hand, so we're gonna, I'm gonna put it in there, because I've already replaced every, all the four parts that are in there. So I know there's no sense in having the plumber replace all four of those parts, so I'm just gonna have him, but uh, a flushing toilet in there. Um, what else have we got? Let's see, uh, we got uh, some spring cleaning to do uh, on the horizon. I get a good day, I can get it. I, I might need to, um, hire Daniel, if he's still available. That was helping me last summer, if he's available. I might need his help uh, for about a week or two, to kind of get some of the stuff going that I haven't got to uh, get to uh, recently. And uh, so, and, and that'll work out pretty good. Uh, my sewing removal this year, uh, the guy I had didn't have to work very often, uh, because we just didn't have those storms like we usually did. We had a, you know, a few good ones, but wasn't that much, so. Um, and he's gonna, I'm gonna be Liz and Hammonds, graduating from law school and moving on, so I'm gonna need to find somebody that's kind of available that would just come in just on an on-call basis. It's hard to find somebody like that. Maybe I'll find another student that's, that's reliable like he was. Um, I need to set up a time to, of future projects with the, um, the research scene of these parking lots. We were waiting until the construction was over. Uh, we really couldn't do it last fall because it wasn't going on, so now we're kind of, uh, hoping that, uh, maybe we'll get a good spring here, and they can, I'll get a whole assignment, and they can get busy on that. We got both parking lots, we have Fifth Street and five oh one, and five oh one is a really bad, there's some big holes in there. And, uh, and all this really needs it, and it's gonna be absolutely striking as well, and we need that too. Um, roof of five oh one needs some work. Uh, I gotta, I called some roofers that have been working on it for some reason. They can't get that drained, uh, drained properly. We got a good rainstorm, it, it seems the mess up. It's a new roof, but, um, they keep fixing that drain, and hopefully they can get it fixed again. Um, I've been to public health a few times this past couple of weeks for a couple of things, and I, I, when I gotta meet with them, and I get to meet them, I'll, I'll work with them and see what they can do, but they need to, uh, maybe set up some um, more in their building maintenance, uh, because, I mean, we can use, I, supplies I help them with. Um, they need to get somebody in there to look at that HVAC system, and we have a guy that comes in all the time. We need to get him in there to make sure everything's gonna work, that it's cooling that building down. Uh, they said they don't have any more money out of building maintenance. Uh, I went over there today, and they had a refrigerator, that's just their, their break room refrigerator, and it's, it's water on the bottom of it, where it condensates and it gets down in the bottom. I was wondering, you know, they said, oh, we just wipe it out and whatever, and I said, well, I wonder how long it's been doing that. So I went and talked to Victoria, who I thought was probably one that I knew that had been there maybe the longest. And I said, how long's that refrigerator been there? She said, it's been there since, since I got here, seven years ago. And I said, well, that thing's leaking, and she said, it's not really leaking, it's just the condensation, but, so it's been doing that since I got here. So, uh, they, I think they've looked at one about as far as they can go. So they probably gonna need a refrigerator over there sometime, and I don't know how we're gonna do that, but all these refrigerators that, you know, they're wearing out, some of them, and we replaced one in Jackie's office, I think, this past winter, and I think I replaced one in, uh, in District Court from, and all those were new, I think, during the, the remodel. Um, I don't know if I replaced the one in, uh, the accessory office. I don't really remember. Uh, I think we might have, but uh, let's see, another thing on the horizon, I gotta get with, uh, uh, Sheriff and possibly Blank. Amy used to do the, uh, we wanted to change the battery, so we, uh, spring one, we left the, uh, tie check, we said, let's do this. So, let's get there. So let's get there, and we will will work together and we'll get those all changed and get the batteries and get those all changed. Uh I was kinda waiting for uh Drug Court requested three new uh buttons for their um. For their office, um they were handling some stuff that they thought maybe it'd be good to each of them have one, so. I ordered three more buttons and uh, but they haven't got here yet, they should be, and I was kinda waiting for that to. Get a hold of them, but that's something we need to do in the future.
Those are wireless, right?
Yes.
Battery powered and wireless.
Yes. And they have a, like a transmitter and uh in a couple of these closets. And then the the main one is in the boiler room, but it goes to the detention center. Uh because that's where the call, well, it goes in there too, but those. Uh ladies aren't always in there, they might be in a inspection or whatever, but there should be somebody at the uh, the justice dispatch to uh that would. Go to that call, so but.
And each one. Whatever receives that signal can differentiate the ball, so they can tell it's.
Absolutely.
Which location.
Says the room number, it says like this room number. Number of it, but it'd say commister room as well as the room number, so. That's, what do we have today, we have uh a two office, we had a, they installed a new uh water meter, but what was it that we were looking forward to? We looked at the electrical panel, and I needed to shut the uh electricity off on this one light that I was looking at, came under, and I didn't wanna shock myself. So I went in the panel and, and the panel says, uh Sheriff's Coffee Maker, and it says. So and so's printed, that's how they label them. That's what the electrical panel. I I never seen anything quite like to do, I couldn't figure out who that light that was, but anyway, you got any, any questions?
So Adam's going new school and you're going old school with the toilets, right?
Adam lost me at internet when he, when he got a. I'd be, I'd be sent to that, I don't know, are you also there, I didn't know what he was talking about.
Yeah, I'd say the key vest.
Yeah.
Who brings you almost fifty?
Uh I don't know, I I know it's maybe, I don't know. On Saturday would be the flush we all go, but everybody washes their hand afterwards anyway, for twenty seconds, right? Yeah, you you hope, but anyway, uh I don't know, but I, but they've always been a uh. A thorn in my side, and it's always Monday morning when I messed up, so anyway, they know, they know my mind is.
Yep, thanks, Roy, I appreciate it. Jackie, Tracy, or Sheriff Applehead? That's the only ones left, everybody's gone.
I didn't prepare anything, so I can go off the cuff.
Okay.
Um they'll be short and sweet, but there's public health too, so don't forget about those guys. Not much really in the office for property taxes are due on Monday. And I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we have lines up the door again um end of the month, I'm sorry, everybody's super busy. The revenues are right on track where they're supposed to be, um had I known I was doing this, I would have brought my analysis. But our sales tax is, as of the April collections, our sales tax is more than the previous two fiscal years were in those years. So our sales tax, see, sorry, it's so much easier to talk with this, our sales tax is doing really well. The revenue estimating manual for the end of the fiscal year has us collecting one point eight million for our general fund sales tax. Which is really good, and then next year they have us for one point three, which is. The next thing I'm doing is I've been working on the the budget and looking at some of the revenues that should be coming in. And our property tax is gonna experience an increase based on all the sales of the homes. It's driving the cost up on the property tax and the assessed valuations, so that'll be good. I just need to hear from Grant on how much that percentage of the increase is gonna be. I have it factored in pretty low right now, but um. That can always change, of course.
Conservative number that you use, you know.
On property tax?
You hear from Grant?
Right now I have three percent, he has given me an unofficial number, but I'm not going to say that out loud. There's two people here that might depend on that. But um I'm factored in three percent right now, just because I feel that's safe. But I also take allowances out of there for bankruptcies and protests, because we won't receive those monies until those items are resolved. Sales, let's see what else, um PILTS, they do have the PILTS numbers higher than they have been this last year, the estimating manual had um. Pilt that, if I remember right, nine hundred and eighty seven thousand. And for next fiscal year, they have it at over a million, but this fiscal year, that one point six million. So um that's gonna look better. We're also awaiting treasury guidance on the American Rescue Plan, that's seven and a half million that we have until twenty twenty four to spend. But there's not much guidance out there yet on how we can use those funds. One that is filled out, and I think kind of, I don't know if Adam touched on his funding source for his broadband, but that's one of his funding sources for the broadband. So um some of the other things in there. Um were revenue shortfalls on our tax collections that we can use American Rescue Plan, but they don't have. The guidance on what that calculation looks like or how we would come up with that backfill. Uh one of the things, though, with that is our sales tax, we can't backfill, cause we're already over collected over our budgetary numbers. Um property tax will know the end of this month where we fall with the the property tax, if we can backfill there. But the other thing that I think is down, um but not a lot, is the gas tax and fuel tax. And I think if they give us the guidance to do that, we might be able to backfill that and also add more to the road fund. Do those taxes.
You're saying, because less fuel tax was collected in the COVID era?
Yeah, cause people work home. So that's the one tax I can think of right now that we would might be able to backfill, if that's in the guidance to do so. Let's see. The next thing, um our storage, we've got the lock on our door, which is super exciting. And I now have no boxes in my office to shuffle around to have a meeting. Um and now we're going to be bringing, we have a three-year license plate supply of truck plates out, evidence storage building that we're gonna bring back in-house here again. Instead of driving out there when we need them. And then the last thing is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Um before that started, I didn't have any gray hair. I just like to add that. Actually, today we just had a meeting and I think we, I I think I feel like it went really well and we're moving in the right direction and having resolution of doing it. I personally have been fielding calls and hel- helping people, I had an appointment with the gentleman today that I assisted him. Um had to send him away to bring his documentation back or upload it himself. Um but as I mentioned in the call, it doesn't serve the county any good to have this grant if I'm gonna be the one. Doing the case management, cause we can't reimburse us for me. So I think um our agencies are gonna step up and um I think they've got some ideas on how they're gonna help people, is that what you guys?
Yeah.
Jackie and Pete. And so we made a super simple application process, basically, tell us how much money you want and you can have it. But once you guys approve it, of course. But we wanted to make it simple and not um make it hard for them, or have, where they had to jump through hoops to. Get money to help offset the costs of this case management.
Can landlords apply or participate in the application of the tenants?
I think the tenant has to initiate it. Um I I mean, that's a really good question, and I don't know that that's. Been asked in the question and answer, but I I I feel.
Yeah, I thought of an original question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do know that the landlords are the desired recipient of any payments, um they they don't wanna send the money directly to the tenants. I don't, um they wanna pay him directly to the landlords or the utilities.
Sure.
To take care of um any of that, but. I think that probably is the big reason why, but um. Some landlords don't wanna participate as well, is what I've been hearing from other counties, but. And I I don't understand why.
What's interesting, I think that uh particularly in the case of low income tenants. If the landlords aren't allowed to help the tenants apply, but at least they understand that the program is there. Then they could maybe help get their tenants pointed in the right direction. Right, if I was landlord and I was faced with an eviction process, or here's where you go get help process, I think they're probably choose ladder.
I don't believe that they can evict yet, I I from the. Process, you know, with the the safety measures that they put in federally, I don't think they're there yet, I don't know, I guess. I've heard conflicting information on that personally, and haven't delved into it to research it further. But um it would be in the landlord's best interest definitely to. You know, help their tenant, whether it's helping them apply or telling them about it, yeah, because it's gonna. Get everybody where they need to be. Um I think that's all I I have right now.
Well, thank you, Tracy, for helping us out, um and giving us all that stuff with the E-Rap, you've been the one that's been helping us move. So I think a reasonable approach, um that isn't. The state just said you go, right, and they they went to some counties to just one agency, or they went to the counties, and I think of the counties were the. The one that is thought to spread it out to more entities, so.
I don't think they um. They have the time to think about how to roll this out either, but it's been difficult.
Yeah, it's been a challenge.
Yeah, and when I don't deal with this side of the grants very often, I deal with the, hey, the money's here.
Right.
You know, but. December thirty first. It goes back, yeah. Um and they alluded to Friday at at the meeting of the Department of Family Services that. Um this is in one of the webinars I participated in, E-Rap one point O and E-Rap two point O is gonna be coming around the. Eventually, which is probably through the American Rescue Plan. Cause this is not, this is A R A, this is American, American Rescue. I don't know, get I'm all confused, not. Yeah, Recovery Act, that's a. So there's so much money.
Right.
Flowing, but, all right.
Thanks, Tracy.
Hey, Kristen, I see your hands up.
Hi.
Hey, what's happening?
Oh, sorry, I didn't make it in person, I had a participant that went a little late today, but I am here to talk about WIC. Um so not a whole lot of updates, but we have been pretty much um doing everything over the phone and curbside since last March. And we have decided in June to start offering that participants can come back into the office. Um we have a lot of families that we haven't seen the babies at all or the kids, um so we're excited to get them in and get some. Weights and heights and hemoglobin globins done for these families, um so that's kind of on the horizons for us. Uh we've gotten a little bit more flexible with options. Um the Wyoming WIC program rolled out an online education, nutrition education system. So for certain families, they can go online and learn more about um. Things that they're interested in related to nutrition, and that can count towards some of their nutrition education that's required to get their WIC benefits loaded. Uh so that's kind of a nice option for those busy families who are having trouble getting into the office. Um initially with WIC, they did receive some funding for the American Rescue Plan Act and increased. Um the amount of fruits and vegetables that families will be getting. So it's a temporary increase, but it's for the months of June, July, August, and September. Families will receive thirty five dollars per active participant in the family. A month towards fresh or frozen fruits and vegetables. So just to give you an idea, um for children, each child got before this nine dollars, um and each. Um mom who is eligible, so would be pregnant or postpartum, would get eleven dollars a month. So it's quite the increase, some families who have, you know, two or three um active participants in the family are getting upwards of, you know, a hundred and five. Dollars a month towards the fresh produce, so we're pretty excited about that. We're trying to get the word out um for families so that they can utilize that this summer. Um and then we continue to just work on our breastfeeding support, Wyoming WIC. Has a new Facebook support group for breastfeeding um that any WIC participant can be a part of. Um they've also just started a new buddy program, so we try to pair up other um pregnant moms or breastfeeding moms around the same. You know, due date or have babies around the same age and kinda do a peer support group in that sense. And then we're continuing to work with the Larny Breastfeeding Coalition, just to really um. Get out in the community and do as much as we can to support and promote breastfeeding. Um and then we've just got our new contract, it's gonna be going through within the next month um. For review, and so that's just always something that we look forward to around this time each year, so I think that's about it for us.
Is there any questions? Kristen, have you seen more of a need, less of a need than you, now that you're coming out of COVID, or do you have a a sense of it all?
Um actually, WIC participation has decreased through COVID, um I think that there's probably a variety of reasons for that. Um a lot of our families that we speak to say, well, with our increase in SNAP dollars, we don't really need WIC as much, or we don't use it as often. So we've actually seen a decline in our um participation, but we hope that we can get that back up and. I'm hoping that the increase in the fruit and vegetable dollars, you know, getting the word out about that will spark some interest in WIC again and get some more families in.
Thank you, anybody else? So I see another person at Public Health, and I'm hoping that's Stacy Bruce, Stacy, is is that you?
Hey, good afternoon, everyone, no, it's not Stacy, it's Bill, um Stacy is got a little tied up and she's actually just uh working with our regional manager right now, so I'm gonna be subbing in for today, if that's all right.
Sure.
So just to give you guys a little bit of an update of currently where we are um with the vaccine administration for COVID nineteen. Um we currently have fifteen thousand and sixty-six first doses that were administered uh total since December twenty eighth. We have eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-five second doses administered, and then we have one thousand and eighty-nine of the uh John or Jansen and Jansen uh doses administered, that's a single dose. Um currently, that's kind of been our main focus here at Public Health, um and then it's gonna be moving forward, it's gonna be getting our new staff members trained up. Um we do have a walk-in clinic, it will be our final walk-in clinic at the Old Armory tomorrow, or I'm sorry, on Wednesday from nine to five. That will be Moderna, and then we're just gonna be finishing up all those second doses um from all the previous clinics that we have moving forward. Um till about mid-June is when we should have that finally wrapped up. Um the reason that we're kind of slowing that down is we do have um a number of different pharmacies and locations within the community that uh residents can make appointments, get vaccinated free of charge. So that's kind of why we're pulling off of that, but other than that, that's really been our main focus um the past couple of months at this point.
Bill, did you, did we lose you?
Uh no, I'm still here, that that's really all I have to report.
Okay, can I say anything for Bill? Okay, is there anything for Bill?
Nope, uh, thanks Bill, I appreciate it. Look forward to meeting Stacy and, and, uh, coming on board with Bethany also. So that's, uh, good news, uh, in public health, building up some back. Put some positions to go full staff. Will that make you guys full staff over there, Bill, with, uh, Stacy and Bethany?
We will be at ninety five percent, um, if that makes sense. Um, we have one, uh. One staff member who is part-time, um, in a full-time position, so we'll, we'll almost be there. But yeah, it'll, it'll definitely help out a lot, especially with the past, uh, eighteen months since I've been here that, uh, we've been low staff.
So, super, thank you Bill, I appreciate it. Jackie, Sheriff, if you want to, uh, have anything, that's fine. If not, that's fine, we'll report out here. If there's anything you guys need us to know, that'd be helpful.
Bailey gone with the grants, everybody's been absolutely extremely patient with us. There's been a lot of work that's been done. To try to keep up with everything, you don't realize how much, um, but I don't think we. Faulted in any, any way, uh, we're keeping all of the reporting abreast. And that's because of the diligent work of Amanda and Kayla and myself trying to work and keep things together. And so, you know, but anytime we have dropped the ball, please just bring it to our attention because we're trying to stay up on it. And Tracy, question, my revenues are up over forty thousand dollars and I still have three months of revenue. So that's an indication how busy we've been.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you guys for, for covering, um. The grants, I know how much that could be. Have we had anybody apply for the, the other opening, you know, the Avon Grants?
I have not, I am not part of that.
Okay.
So the, the revenue increase, I mean, when I think about what you sell, it's mostly land and auto titles, right? I don't know what else people pay for, marriage licenses.
We thought summertime is the best time of Valentine's Day, I think. And so when Tracy has her lines, they start constantly.
Sheriff, anything? Okay. Sue, would you, give us a little wrap-up of your stuff, uh, that you've been on and then we'll get through here.
It's a barge out here, um, where it is the Cape Light on the east side of party. We're the one on the west side and it is called, uh, Fail Desolation. To the point where no one had to take down the first chair now. People started getting almost ugly with the children. I think it's a good opportunity for public education, I know. And that it's not all have to be, be have all. You know, western. Works with town as well. Are trying to educate us after some. Um, it does have a, I would have chance go look at these two sponsors, they're very, very cool actually. Uh, and that's, there was a lot of black. Anyway, I think the issue that they're, uh, enough for. Members. They are working on updating their, their work plan. So looking at this, that means the board composition to increase the diversity of education. This is the. That would mean what we have found and also they have any ideas, they're also making that support for them. That making Rachel more by. He was talking about how the first thing that comes to sure is that July to August in front of the civic center and.
Yeah, no, yeah, so they're all, I think. That's a fun.
They're still working. I targeted, decided to target all types of. Um, they're looking to confirm enrollment, door enrollment. Also, just their online perspectives, um, they would like to have a campus to the physical location. Operating rotation for any online campus. Studies and, uh, meet your first standard. Then decide whether the course delivered will be synchronous or placey for this. Do it in real time or not even in time, but have the option. Been unlike. Pretty much this discussion of maybe having a combination. Discussion on what schedule and. There are currently fourteen, thirteen programs listed online. Some of them are programmed. Large space in twenty twenty one, uh, who's still going to find approvals. Hawaii check, maybe a national five five. There's the potential for programs, uh, with new teacher. The team of Black and White of Wyoming goes to our more students enter resist. First year. Which will also allow our students to either live at the door or at home that enjoy the more benefits.
How about your city, uh, county group?
Um, city, county, haven't had it many years. What we have decided was to have city attorney, county attorney. That is in preparation for.
Awesome.
Alright. Tourism Board, they. I don't know if any of you have ever gotten the, the Laramie app, I have it, it's fun. I can't see it right here. But there's a, there's a, you know, a Y Laramie app. That has a bunch of cool information on it, that's fun. They got beat up in revenue. By COVID to some degree because hospitality industry. Suffered, um, the wind farms up north helped take some of that away. Because there were lots of people coming into our community to deal. So without those wind farms, it could have been super ugly. If, it would be my opinion and probably theirs that they market Laramie well and that Laramie has actually fared. Better than, or Albany County is fair better than, could be expected. Or the, would have been expected through COVID. But it's not all roses. The Chamber Business Alliance continues to recruit businesses. They have a philosophy that I agree with and that is. Because of limited resources, you know, if you wanted to create two hundred jobs, it would be better. Or attract two hundred jobs, it would be better to do that in twenty, ten people companies than two, one hundred people companies. Because of the. And, and then also there's resilience built in there. So if you take something like Cody Labs where they, where they closed that operation up and laid off a whole bunch of people. Or coal mines in Campbell County when, when the big employer struggles. It can be really bad for the local economy. So sometimes you think that you want to hit a home run, but really base hits are safer. From an economic development perspective. So, so that's kind of, um. Maybe might be interesting and useful for the, for the public to understand about the Chamber Business Alliance's philosophy. Lots of companies, generally they give nicknames and there's non-disclosure agreements because. So while they talk about. Clients, they don't speak about them by name because maybe they're considering leaving another community or whatever. And they, they want to manage their own PR. But you know, so in the end, I can't tell you. Who, who wants to come here, cause I, even I don't know. You know, in the meetings, the, the discussion is, is, is about the clients in the abstract. You know, so you can know some things, but you can't necessarily know what they are. Like you could know how much money they intend to invest and how many jobs they would create. And maybe that they're manufacturing or service or what, but you can't really know. Or I, or IT or something, but you can't, you can't know who it is. So I can't tell you that. The Fair Board we heard from, so I, I won't rehash that. Besides Josie tells it better than I do. Weed and pest is. Very solvent, organized, tip-top, remarkably zero drama. They just do what they do. And what's interesting about that is that. You know, noxious weeds and invasive weeds and pests can be really damaging. And only certain people know how to see what's happening. So they do a lot of really important work that. That we kind of take for granted, we don't realize this happened. USAC, we were gonna meet earlier in April, the Urban Systems Advisory. Commission, and that's basically. Why dot the city of Laramie and the county prioritizing the use of federal funds in. Transportation projects with some guidelines and generally it, it would be related to things like. Bill and I going from up there by the high school down to like Corville and then tying in at. Twentieth Street or whatever, eventually ending up down there, Third Street. You know, that's long-term kind of stuff. Also. Bluebird Lane, which is Bill and I broken up for two blocks between Vista and Grant. There, there's some projects that, that sometimes the deck gets reshuffled, but they're. Rob could tell us, do you remember what the number one project is? Yeah. I think it's. There was Bill and I from the high school down. That is, if that's the number one. Yeah, and that would be thirtieth going south from Grant down towards Bill and I. Bill and I. And probably. That's a chicken and egg thing, but you know, the, the federal funds are finite enough. That there's really way more projects and needs than. The money can really touch, and so it's. It's kind of slow. Do you ever feel like it's just? Super slow? It's pretty hard. It's hard. Health insurance management. I have. For whatever reason, I can't seem to jive with. But it's been a little bit funky, but. But we did well last year in terms of our. Payouts, and so. The county reimbursed, you know, basically gave distribution back to. To employees because there was less utilization last year, and I think that it's related to. To COVID and people staying away from healthcare, which. If it's. If you. Kick the can down the road, you could wind up with a medical issue that costs more later. Or that's. More disruptive or dangerous for you. So I don't necessarily think that that's a good thing. But it's what happened. And. As far as that goes, we have amazing healthcare and. We have enough money in reserve. So that. Not a lot of adjustments have to be made, and I actually. And I, I don't know if Jackie would agree with this or Tracy, but I wouldn't. Every year that. I suppose budgetarily speaking, the big concern is whether. We would have to raise rates because that has a. A real effect on. The county budget. Because the county. Pays most of the premium. You know. The employee portion is relatively small. And I think that for whatever reason, miraculously, we've been able to avoid. You know, big percentage cost increases for the last few years, and that will be true in. Do you agree with that? Yep. It keeps the, his inside knowledge of the processes and. Pitfalls helps us steer clear of. We don't get tossed around like the cork in the ocean. We. We are able to see things and. Deal with it sooner so that. They don't get expensive and beat up our plant. But basically. It's been good. There is. We pay a. Very small fee to be part of something called MedLiminal. And, um. You. Basically, it's a way. Because of HIPAA, the county can't make anyone do it, but we encourage the employees to. To sign up and use MedLiminal to review. Complex. Invoices. That come from. From providers. I would say that anytime there's a hospitalization or maybe an outpatient surgery. Probably not your basic doctor visit. You know. A hundred dollar doctor visit. Checkup or whatever. But the, the big complicated ones, this company goes through and basically audits them. And. Negotiates or. I'll, I'll use negotiates. With the provider to. To make sure that the billing is honest and understandable, so what it can do in the end is save our group plan. Tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think that we don't quite get enough utilization. Probably because. We don't know how to help our employees. Know how to do that work. Do you agree with that?
That's true, but we are.
Are we gonna?
Because. We actually have more than hopefully received. So it's not a definite.
It would only work if we utilized it, and it's. A little bit cumbersome.
Anything with your county, city?
We were going to meet in early April, and for whatever reason, that didn't jive, and so. The next time we meet like this, I'll have more to say. It's pretty, it's pretty tough. Um, to do infrastructure planning because then the question is, who pays for it, right?
Yes.
When our regulations don't require a certain type of infrastructure, it's more kind of municipal. And the city's not likely to invest outside. Their boundary unless it is paid for by the. Water Development Commission or something like that, and actually there are, there have been water projects that. Have created. Big pipeline loops that. That can distribute water into subdivisions that, as people ask for allocation. I think the challenge is that. But, um. It, it's all about the money and the difficulty of the process. The fact that somebody can. Make forty acres into eight lots. And make more money and do it way faster than they can. Make forty acres into a hundred and twenty lots. With city infrastructure. Business meets certainty and. If you can develop in that hat, you can develop here. As long as certainty. I think that's what's. Processes to numbers. But hopefully we can work through that and find a way. To make it so. We can handle the pressure. It is my opinion that there's going to be an onslaught into Albany County. Coming from the front range, and I don't think. That the city planning department nor the county planning department. Are. For the pressure. That's going to come. We gotta get it done.
Alright, well, just go quickly over my EAC. It's our experts for the environmental advisory, so we've got the wind regulations with them right now, they're. Working to do some expertise for the, the upcoming cap. They've been working with this, the. University on the sustainable plan between the, the city and the university, and hopefully. We'll join in at some point with that. In an incredibly busy group, they did some. Work at the legislature with the net metering. And testified on behalf of that, they're also working with Spring Creek Elementary. They saw the trash that you guys probably saw in the paper, um, at Spring Creek Road. Uh, the third grade class, um, about getting the trash out of Grand Avenue and trying to figure out how to do that, and so they helped. The third grade, uh, at Spring Creek figure out, maybe not only do we pick up the trash, but maybe we make it a science project. By measuring the trash and weighing the trash, and so, uh, they're a busy group. Like covered LEPC, uh, better, uh, airport board, of course, the airport terminal. Mostly done, um, and most of the time it's been spent finishing up that moving equipment. Um, and then, uh. It seems like there'll be some transitions at the leadership at the airport, um, incoming in the next few weeks. Historic Preservation Board, uh, has got a historic preservation plant. Um, that we'll have a meeting tonight at six, um, they're rolling out, they have a. A contractor, um, to help set up a historic preservation plant for the county. Uh, it's really interesting crew, it's really passionate. Thinking about the west side and trying to figure out how to. Understand some of the historic buildings and, and get that part of, of Albany County, uh, detailed a little bit more. Uh, the rec board met last week, uh, good news was most of those projects were funded. And the better news is there's money left over, so I think they're going to hold up an route. For small dough, small, uh, grants, um, and that should be coming through from, uh, the rec board, which is. Super good, um, and then. I'm hopeful that we will have a deliverable at the intergovernmental, uh, group that I'm on. Thanks to Sheriff Applehands, um, and a few other folks, uh, the chief of police, Alder, and those, the group. We've been working on the detention center, um, I think we have a. Draft contract that the city signed off on that is now at our legal. Um, and hopefully we can get that across the line. Um, it'll be maybe a, a longer deal, maybe five years, hopefully, they were more interested in that, which I'm totally interested in. Um, and then I think next we'll work on. The bird that's been under their saddle, which is, uh, EMS. And how do we offset those costs, as you've watched some of the, the work in. Some of the online, uh. Discussions, many of these, uh, EMTs, um, are losing, um, in county, so, uh, Sweetwater County. Has, uh, lost one of their EMTs, if not their EMT. Cody and that part of the world has lost an EMT. Because it's hard to make it pencil out, um, and make money on it, and so they had all, both had contracted out to outside entities. And then now those entities don't want to reap it on the EMT, and so. That's something we'll be talking with the city about. That's, uh, the quick and dirty of, of my crews. And I thank you so very much for this, um, we'll be, uh. Sending you one out here a little bit, and maybe I'll send you out a survey, um. And see how, what we can do to make this more useful to you. And maybe we come in and have the people report, and then we'll do that the next time around, but thank you so much, I really do appreciate it, have a great evening. Thanks, everybody, for the good work you do.